Good evening and welcome to the January 14th Council Regular Meeting. And I would like to take real call, Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Rushen.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia. And Mayor Stone. And at this time, I would like someone to make a motion to appoint a presiding officer for this meeting.
I hereby move to appoint Councilmember Zach Upton as the presiding officer for January 14th, 2019. This is in regular meeting accordance with Section 1312 of the Codified Ordinances.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Upton?
I would like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Stone and Vice Mayor Garcia.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, they are excused. For our viewing public, just real quick, what happened here? Mayor Stone and Vice Mayor Garcia were unable to attend the meeting tonight, and we have to have someone to handle the gavel. So my colleagues have appointed me to do that for the evening. But rest assured, Mayor Stone and Vice Mayor Garcia are doing well. Both out on vacation or personal leave, so no emergencies or anything like that. With that, we will continue on with the meeting. We are at...
Pledge.
Pledge. Councilmember Curran, would you like to lead us tonight?
All stand please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd just ask everyone to just bow their heads for a moment of silence, given, basically to give our new administration and the state government that they would have proper direction and proper wisdom in the weeks and months to come in terms of facing the number of challenges that we have in our state. Thank you.
Next item is approval of the agenda, and I believe that we wanted to add an item. Somebody like to add the executive session?
I would move that there be a short executive session at the end of the meeting.
Second.
That would be, um, item...
Sixteen. All in favor of adding executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries, we will add the executive session to the end of the meeting. Next up, a public hearing on PUD 18-1. Can we have the reading, please?
This is an application filed by Gilligan Company, 3805 Edward Road, Suite 680, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45209. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of a 2,215 square foot Dunkin' Donuts on 0.6232 acres of land. The property is located on the northwest corner of Lance Road and North Fairfield Road. The property is further described as Book 5, Page 5, Part of Parcel 126 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is the applicant here this evening? If you want to come up and give us an idea of what you're here for this evening?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Kara Burkhardt, and I am here on behalf of Gilligan Company this evening, requesting approval for a new Dunkin' at the corner of Lance Road and North Fairfield Road. It's our, it's Dunkin's next gen, or they call it their next gen, or their next generation store. We just opened one in Washington Township on Far Hills, and it looks, it looks great. We're really excited about that store, and we're excited about this store coming to Beaver Creek. I know the staff has prepared a comprehensive report for you guys tonight, so I won't stand up here and duplicate that effort. I am here to answer any questions, if there are, if there are any questions, when he's done with his report. Thank you very much.
Sir?
Good evening. The case you have before you is PUD 18-3. It's the, I'm sorry, I've got the wrong one up. The applicant's requesting approval of a site plan to allow for the construction of a 2,200 square foot restaurant on about .6 acres. The project will be located in central Beaver Creek, as the applicant stated, is just at the south, or I'm sorry, the northwest corner of Lance Road. This is the Lance Road extension on the west side of the, of North Fairfield, at North Fairfield Road. As City Council may be aware, this property was rezoned last year, and among the many uses that are allowed in this PUD, restaurants are one of the permitted uses. Also, when it was rezoned, there was a 20-foot buffer established on the northern property line, and this application meets all the setbacks and buffer requirements established in the rezoning. Actually, the entire PUD is a little over three acres, but the .6 acres we're talking about are highlighted in yellow here. As you can see, it's a vacant parcel, there's some trees and landscaping throughout, but it's mostly, it's just basically a vacant property. The PUD again is highlighted in yellow. To the north is a single-family residential, to the south, there's a daycare, and ultimately, there's another PUD which is currently a vacant land, but it's part of the Rock Drive PUD. To the east, across North Fairfield, is the Wright Pack Credit Union Bank, and then there's some multi-tenant retail and a tractor supply store there. Seen here is a proposed site plan. They are proposing to have one entrance to the site, which will be located as far practically away from that intersection at North Fairfield and Lance as possible. We had them line it up as best we could with the entrance to the daycare, but we wanted to ensure that there was a smooth transition out of the site, so we couldn't get it as far west as we preferred, but, you know, this is a, we went back and forth with the applicant, and this was our best, this is the best place that we could get them, we could get it on the site with the layout of the property. So when you go in, it's a one-way traffic around, and ultimately, there's a left-out and a right-out, but the street ends right here, but the long-term goal is to have Lance Road extend all the way. Right now, it stops about here, but have it extend down to Dayton Zinnia Road. So that's why we had them have that right-out as well, because there will be an extension of that Lance Road. In terms of parking, they're required, based on the floor plan, because this is a smaller building, and we take into account for restrooms and hallways and stuff like that, but based on the calculation, they're required to have 15 parking spaces, they show 17, and they also meet the minimum ADA handicap requirement. They are showing sidewalk, extending the existing sidewalk to their entrance, and when Lance Road's extended, then it will ultimately have sidewalks on both sides of the road. It's the same that the daycare across the street did, is extend that sidewalk to their entrance point. Seen here is the architectural elevations. The building is 54 feet long, 35 feet wide, and about 22 feet to the top of the parapet wall. I think the color elevations are easier to read. They're proposing the building to be made out of dark gray fiber and orange metal painted band board around. You can see it, it covers the entrance to the building, and then like a, it's a faux wood, it's laminate wood look panels on all four elevations, so they do carry all the architectural elevations and features on all four sides of the building. As you see from the proposed landscape plan, it is a very well landscaped site. You know, they're going to have good screening to the residential properties to the north, and good evergreen trees and shrubs, and decorative plants and shrubs, so, you know, the proposed landscape plan is a, is a nice and comprehensive plan. They are proposing wall signs on all four elevations, just based on, it's their logo and brand, and based on the total square footage, you know, we didn't, it's not an overly intrusive amount of signage, and we think it looks good on the building. Terms of ground sign, we didn't get too many details on the ground sign, except the location. We did have a condition that it'd be five foot tall max, and 25 square feet for per sign face. There are 21 conditions in the motion for your consideration this evening. Both Planning Commission and staff do recommend approval of the applicant's request, and I'll be happy to answer your questions following the public hearing. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. This is time for public input on this particular case. If anyone is here this evening that would like to speak on this particular PUD, we'll give you three minutes to do so. You know, up to two other folks donate their three minutes for a total of nine to you. But if you'd like to give your comments on the Dunkin' Donuts PUD, please come forward. We receive anything via mail? No? Okay. Well, then we'll close the public input session for this time, and we'll open up to Council. Our Councilmember Littrell.
Thank you, sir. I have a couple of questions for staff. Thank you so much. You guys always do such a wonderful job, you've covered almost everything, so I only have a few questions for you. Lighting? I didn't hear you mention...
They did include a lighting plan, I didn't have it on the presentation here, but...
Well, it's in here, but have we...
Yeah. They've addressed, and they've addressed all the conditions, and we'll make sure that they have 16-foot poles, and they won't have foot candles, zero foot candles at the property lines, so we won't have the light pollution.
With some of the strawberries and things that they're going to have, that'll help with that barrier? Now, isn't there a house on the very rear side of that, that actually you come off of?
It's on, it's right on this property here.
I've seen it since they've torn down the old farmhouse.
Um, let's see if I can pull up an aerial, it might be, there's the house up here.
Well, no, there's one straight back, because...
Oh, oh, this way, yes.
Thank you. So it is, so, and then that'll, that's plenty of the, there we go. It's back, actually past that line. It's even further, okay. Which will, and then my other question is, on the leaving the store, is it lined up, it's not lined up with the light?
With the light.
You said you tried to get the stoplight?
Well, the light's out here.
Right, no.
With the entrance to the daycare.
Okay. So when they come out, they're going to go out, and then to the left, so they don't have direct, it's not as close to North Fairfield as what I was thinking.
Right. I mean, they're going to come out and go left into this, there's a...
No, that's fine.
Left turn lane, and...
Okay.
And then there's a stoplight.
And then there's the stoplight.
And a stoplight, right.
So, alright. I think it's going to be very popular for the people that drop their children off at that daycare, and so that was one of the questions I had, when people coming in and out of there, so, yeah.
Right.
So, and then on the, is it the standard width for the driveway?
Yes. We got it to 36 feet.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Upton. I thank you to staff for the presentation. For the properties directly north of the proposed development, I believe in our packet list, those are still, they're still R1A.
Correct.
Is there any future plans for staff for the properties immediately adjacent to North Fairfield? I'm just trying to get an idea if they will continue to be R1, or if we have it in our master plan, or the corridor plan of what that will be in the future, to see how it buts to this development.
Right. On the land use plan, that property immediately to the north is a mix of single-family residential slash office. So there's an opportunity to go either single-family office, or some low intense...
Is it being marketed any way, or?
Just give you a quick update on that, because there's been, there's a lot of dynamics to that property, some we were aware of, some we found out as we were talking to the owners of the property. As Randy mentioned, that lot, and I think the lot just to the west of it is designated as residential office, which means it's probably an office, but it has residential characteristics to it. If you go by there, you'll see a rendering on there that kind of looks like a house. There was been some interest from some medical users on that property. One of the problems is with the covenants restrictions within that plat, there's about 100 lots within that plat. There's a requirement that all the, all 100 lots identified within that area be residential only, without 65 or 60% of approval of the owners within there going other than non-residential. Even though the condition was on the plat in the 1950s or 60s, we was brought to our attention, really, anybody still has claim to enforce those regulations, since they are legally, legal and enforceable covenants restrictions, so they're really governing themselves at this point. The owners of the property have taken some baby steps, for lack of better words, to go out there and try to get some of the signatures and petitions, there's been some miscommunication being relayed back and forth. But for the most part, at this stage, for them to move forward comfortably within their own confines, as opposed to what we regulate, because if they came in and had met our land use plan, and they wanted to rezone it, we'd obviously do our best to make Council aware of the restrictions that were there, but they're not enforceable by the city, they're self-enforced within the, within the plat itself. So, right now, there's a lot of challenges for that, but we will look how to accommodate that, should it ever get approved to go other than non-residential residential office, and we'll look at, of course, cross-access and access to that light as well, as we're looking at how that progresses, and how we look at this when it comes in for the subdivision stage.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that part of it?
No, no. I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilmember Van?
So, my only concern is for a lot of people who like coffee, like it at six or seven in the mornings, they're going to have their headlights on, and so they're going to drive up to the drive-through, and then shine their lights on those houses, and I'm just wondering who's going to be upset about headlights? And if there's, the real question is, is there, is the landscaping plan adequate to shield people who would be worried about the headlights?
Right, yeah, I mean, these arborvitae that be planted, you know, we'll make sure that they're six feet when they're planted. The dumpster enclosure actually is located right here, and that's going to be six or seven feet tall, so when the cars do come around a corner, actually, that will actually help, you know, block some of those, or at least, you know, block out some of the headlights. You know, we can, we can beef up the landscaping back here, but you know, with that dumpster enclosure, and the arborvitae row, and the evergreen shrubs, you know, I'm confident that, you know, we've got a good...
So the big ones in the middle are deciduous?
These here will be, I believe that those are the deciduous trees here, and then the...
Yeah, so those will be tall, and so the headlights will go underneath them.
Right, and then, but the line back here is the arborvitae, the evergreen shrubs or trees, I don't know, it's a shrub or tree.
Some of those homes do have privacy, I'm pretty sure.
Right, and this is a vacant lot, I mean, right now, it's a vacant lot, so, I mean, the house is actually back here. You know, we can add some additional landscaping back in this corner, but the, I believe these were blue spruce as well, these three.
You might, you might have it, I just wanted to make sure we were paying attention to that, because that is so annoying to people that aren't used to having headlights in their windows.
Right.
Early in the morning.
Sure.
So, that, I think that if Dunkin' Donuts has good coffee like their propose, or their reputation is, I think it'll be very popular. Thank you.
No comments, member? No?
Just really, one question for me. You know, when I look at this diagram, I question the emergency access. There's only one in and out, it looks like, there on the one corners.
Yeah, we forwarded to the fire department, you know, I think with the shallow depth of the lot, you know, they can, any kind of emergency, they can, they can...
They're going to go through those deciduous trees?
No, it, I mean, they do have room, that's what, why, you know, there was some major discussion on this entrance, so they could get around this building. I mean, so we had to have it wide enough to where they could swing out and come back and get around the building. You know, and like you said, the building's fairly close to the road, if, the worst, they had to fight fire from the road, or something like that, but, I mean, we did have it wide enough to where, and situated enough where they can get in and around, but they, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, daycare has the same issue.
Right, the one entrance, and being on a corner like this, North Fairfield as well, but we did forward it to them, and they didn't have any concerns with that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I'd like to make a motion to, I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of a specific site plan for Dunkin' Donuts, on the basis that City Council finds that the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials, and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria of the specific site plan, as per 158066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are 21. I further move this council, that this council, excuse me, that this motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, is there, and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, it's Public Hearing, PUD 18-3.
This is an application filed by Beaver Creek DOHP, 9010 Overlook Boulevard, Brentwood, Tennessee, 37027. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of a 29,100 square foot retail store on 3.41 acres. The property is located at 3867 Dayton Senior Road, further described as Book 2, Page 11, Parcels 140, 141, 144, 145, and 146 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
All right, is the applicant here this evening? If you could come up, please, sir, give us your name, address, and give us a quick synopsis of what you're hoping to do tonight.
Yes, my name's Alex Kinsey, I'm from Stackbeck Engineering, all the way over in Pennsylvania. I drove out from the meeting.
Wow.
Yeah.
Do we need his address?
Yeah, if you, if you want my address, you can...
Do we need the address? We're good, thank you.
Okay. But, but we are the design engineer for the, for the civil portion of this project, and yeah, we're here to obtain approval for a site-specific plan. We've already obtained, we previously got the property rezoned to a CPUD, and we're also concurrently working on a lot combination replat, because the property is currently five lots, so all that is being handled as well. So at this point, we've received recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission for this site-specific plan, so we're, we're here tonight to answer any other questions you may have regarding this plan.
Great.
Let Randy take it from there.
Thank you, sir. Stick around, we may have some questions for you.
Absolutely.
Does this make sense?
The PUD, you have, the case you have before you is PUD 18-3, it's the Dollar General Specific Site Plan. Again, the applicant's looking to construct a 9,100 square foot retail store on about three and a half acres. The project's located in central Beaver Creek, it's about a quarter mile east of the intersection of Grange Hall Road and Dayton Zinnia. Seen here is the PUD, the entire, the five lots of the PUD, it was rezoned last year. Just for a frame of reference, to, just to the north is the senior center, so that's, that's where we're at. The PUD has about 330 feet of frontage on Dayton Zinnia Road, there's a small, small frontage on Longview, but that's not being utilized in the application tonight. As you can see from the aerial photo, it's a fairly vacant lot, there is a 2,500 square foot house in the center, and a few outbuildings, and then around the western property line, and most of the southern property line is a tree line, so there is some trees that buffer this site with the residential properties. Again, the property was rezoned late last year to PUD, and general retail stores are in allowed use, so what they're proposing this evening does fit within the confines of the PUD, as well as all the buffers and setback requirements established in the PUD. To the west is R01, it's actually single-family residential, and then to the south, and to the west also is R1A, single-family residential. Yeah, to the east is a car lot, or I'm sorry, a car repair place, and then to the north again is the senior center. Seen here is the proposed site plan. Again, all the buffers and require, buffers and setback requirements within the PUD have been met. They're proposing one access site, one access point to the site, which lines up with the, there's a small multi-tenant retail store just to the north, and they had a bike store and maybe a diner, but just to the north of that, so it does line up with that entrance point. There is a left-out and right-out, and then ultimately, full access in as well. In terms of parking, based on these calculation in the square footages of the building, they're required to have 31 parking spaces, and they do provide 32, and two ADA handicap parking spaces, so they do meet all the minimum requirements for parking, as well as handicap. Now, this is kind of an easier view of the site plan, so you can see where it lines up with the entrance across, and then these, these two entrances here for the senior center, but again, the only entrance is, to the side is here. They did put the building as far away from the residential properties to the south, and to the southwest as possible, with the main parking field being north of the building, and on the opposite side of the building is the residential properties. In terms of landscaping, they are proposing landscaping out front, as well as some landscaping along the entranceway here, and throughout the site. One of the requirements that we had at Planning Commission was, we wanted to see landscaping along the perimeter of the building, and after discussion at Planning Commission, Planning Commission agreed to have some planners put in on the sidewalk that's budding between the parking lot and the building, so that there is some greenery, and it's not just pavement to building, there's, there's a buffer there. Now, this is the grading plan, you can see that they're proposing a stormwater detention pond to the southwest of the building, as well as to the west of the building, so there's two ponds, and then ultimately, the pipe's going to be under the driveway. They are, will be required to have the final engineering reviewed and approved by Engineering Department, to ensure that they do meet all the requirements. The initial engineering did meet it, but we want to make sure that the final engineering meets all the requirements of the stormwater detention section of our codified. Seen here are the proposed architectural elevations. The building, we constructed mainly a fiberboard, cement fiberboard, but it's, it's colored and textured in a way to make it appear brick on most of the building, a red brick, and then on the base of all four elevations, as well as some pilasters on all four elevations, they are proposing that gray sandstone look fiberboard cement. We did add a few conditions, one that, that they have a cornice cap on three sides of the building, on the north, the west, and the east elevations, so the front of the building and the two sides that you would see from north, I'm sorry, from Dayton Zinnia Road, will have that cornice cap, similar to what you see at Pet Value, and on the Kroger, and a lot of the other businesses up and down Dayton Zinnia Road, we want to continue that theme of a cornice cap on top of the building. Also, in order to add additional architectural features, you require, the conditions require that they put two windows on the front of the building, whether they be real functional windows or faux windows, I mean, that's up to the applicant. The Speedway that's on North Fairfield and Kemp, if you notice, on the south side of the building, those, we had them put similar windows on that, but those are actually faux windows, there's building siding right behind those windows, so, you know, that'd be something we, if they, if they can't make it work in the site, the floor plan of the building, at least have some architectural feature on the front of that building. These are the cornice caps that I'm talking about on the, on the, that we have as a condition. Seen here is the lighting plan, they do meet our minimum requirements, we do have a 16-foot maximum on this, and they do meet that, so we didn't have any concerns over the lighting plan that they provided. In terms of signage, they propose one wall sign on the building, it's, I believe, 71 and a quarter square feet, it's on the front of the building, and then one proposed ground sign. In the plans itself, it calls for the ground sign to be fairly large, quite out of character with this site, or of a development of this size, they, they called for it to be 16 feet tall, and on other buildings, or other projects of this size, that we, again, we have a maximum of five feet tall, and 25 square feet per sign face, so we did that, add that same condition into this, should City Council approve that. Planning Commission agreed, and limited that to the 25 square feet and five feet tall. The sign that they were asking for is similar to the Kroger Marketplace pylon sign. The sign that they were asking for is similar to the Kroger Marketplace pylon sign that's 16 feet tall and, you know, 90 square feet per sign face, so. A few of the conditions, again, they're required to get the final subdivision so we can get those lots cleaned up and make sure that it's all one unified lot. The dumpster enclosure be screened. One thing I wanted to add to condition number 13, just for council's review, in, on the dumpster enclosure, they showed a chain link fence, but it covered in, it covered in a vinyl covering. It's going to be here, and we wanted to add that condition, that it be either vinyl planks or treated lumber planks, like we have in the rest of the dumpster enclosures throughout the city, so that we have a uniform look. I added the language at the end of condition number 13, should council agree with that. Again, move to those conditions. So there's 25 conditions in your motion for your consideration. Planning Commission and staff do recommend approval of the applicant's request, subject to these 25 conditions. Now, if you have any answered questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to open the public input portion of the, of the PUD. Anyone here this evening that would like to speak about this particular case? We'll give you three minutes. If two other folks donate up to three minutes each for a total of nine to you. If anyone would like to speak, please come up, give us your name and address and your commentary.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name's Bob Stanton. I live at 1519 Longview, South Longview. That house right there set in the bottom, one, that one, right there. So I'm here to request, I didn't see any, I looked at some of the landscaping plans in the office, I didn't see any evergreen screening in the, in the back, so I was, I was here to request if there could be some landscaping there to sort of block the view of that commercial site. We just, I just recently retired after 36 years working for the Air Force, had a right pat here, and we just bought that place about two years ago as a little, little retirement place, and this commercial site becoming, we knew we had the garage next door to us, but it's sort of to the side and not, sort of out of, out of view of the back, looking out the back, but the new Dollar Store becomes a big commercial site for us. So any consideration for additional evergreen landscaping? There's already, you can see the, some of the brush there. Most of that is like holly brush, so it's low level, maybe six, eight feet tall, and the rest is deciduous trees, so they lose the leaves, as was indicated on the Dunkin' Donuts, so we can see right through to see the buildings that exist there right now. The other thing is, I don't know, the lighting, security lighting for the back of the facility, I don't know if that's going to be pointing out towards our house. I would request any lighting for that security of the back of the building, maybe come from the, from the border, you know, and point towards the store as opposed to maybe, as opposed to being mounted on the store and pointing towards us, so.
Okay. Well, congratulations on the retirement, sir.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Appreciate that, and we'll see if we can get that address for you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here this evening like to make comment? Okay, we'll close the public input section, and we'll open up the council. We'll start with Councilman McCurn.
When I looked at this particular site, one of the things that's kind of given me a little bit of heartburn, and I'll probably have a little bit of a clash with our, one of our residents here at Spoh, but that, I thought those five parcels, that one that went out onto Longview, I thought that was a natural point for vehicles to go back out to the intersection of Dayton Xenia, they'd have a light there and everything, to go out. And it looks like we're trying to, we're going to use just that one ingress and egress point, and you have two hills. When you come over Dayton Xenia, the cars really go like everything, come down that hill, and that's where that ingress, ingress, egress point is. Then you've got another hill coming down from the east, and I'm just wondering how really safe that's going to be. I know that we've got a road expansion, but I think this is going to be, manager, you might want to comment, what's the timing on the road and the timing on Dollar General?
Dollar General, I can't speak to on that timing, but our road expansion there would be 2020, probably going into 2021 some.
Dollar General's intent is to start construction sometime in the spring.
In the spring?
Probably the beginning of the second quarter.
I understand. I just really see that as a real touchy-feely situation there, getting in and out with cars coming from east and west going down a hill. I don't know, it looks tight, subjectively speaking.
Any comments?
I totally agree. I told you at zoning that I would require an exit onto Longview because chronically Noelwood Garden has had horrible problems with egress, ingress on Dayton Xenia, mostly egress. And so they actually have made a way to go around two blocks to come out of the stoplight because it is so hard on Dayton Xenia. So I am not happy at all that you don't have an egress on Longview, so.
Thank you. Mr. Rusher?
Does this PUD lend itself to further development? Is that staff's intention at all?
The way the site's designed and the grading of the site, I mean, is just not going to be an error. This is the only building that's really going to be built out there. There's no intention for it to, now is it impossible? No, but I mean, there's no intention for it.
There's no intention of that. Thank you.
Okay, well, that leaves me. So I do have a couple of questions. Randy, first, I do want to thank Dollar General for looking and wanting to invest in our community. That's, it's wonderful to have people want to build and bring businesses in here and jobs, and a great place to shop, I'm sure. However, when looking at that site, I also have some serious concerns. Traffic is horrible on Dayton Xenia, and so it's, that is just really not a workable solution, in my opinion. The other thing is, I was wondering if, as for the applicant, if you thought about looking at some of the empty buildings that we do have in Beaver Creek for this particular project? Because we do have some very nice, large-scale, empty businesses, so. I know that generally you want your own product and your own way to design things like our Dunkin' Donuts is, just, just a, I just wondered if you looked at that as well?
Right. Typically, what, just like you said, what we like to do is have our own standalone building. It presents a classier facility versus being in an older, older-style strip mall kind of atmosphere. The whole company is steering away from that, so those, even a lot of those are now being converted, that we're finding our own lots to build on.
And I do understand that business model, I just was curious.
I honestly can't tell you, either way, I wasn't involved at the initial, the initial hunting for a property, if you will. I wasn't involved with that. So I'm sure there were, I'm sure a lot of options were looked at. It's typical that we've seen that we try to take a property that needs very minor demolition or anything like that, or grading for that matter, to kind of, you know, reduce our costs as a business, so, you know, and make it easier to build and start a new building on our own, so.
Well, thank you for answering that. Randy, so is there any suggestion or any ways that we could alleviate some of that issue?
I mean, we looked at that entrance here on Longview. It's such a narrow piece of property. I mean, it's such, it narrows up so much, and it got really close because of the grading of the site. Got the grading plan here. The way to get around the building, they would have had to swung really close out to the house here and then come back around, and this is pretty steep from here to here. I think that's 16, 17 feet from here to here.
Well, we don't want to add it to the, to the residence.
And that was the concern, was, you know, the steepness, as well as, you know, the proximity to the, to the, to the residential. Now, is it doable? I mean, it's something, it's not impossible, sure, but, you know, we were just looking for ways to keep him as far away from that residential property.
Oh, I agree with that. Okay, well, thank you.
Randy, let me ask you a question. Is there a, what do you call that, where you have a lane where it cut over to the side to make a right-hand turn?
A decelerate?
Traffic, what's that called?
A decelerate?
Yeah. Is there a deceleration lane planned in that entrance there so that, I'm afraid of cars coming over the top, and all of a sudden here you got a truck and everybody, they're going to come into a screeching halt, and you're going to have a lot of wrecks. If you had a deceleration lane, you could pull the cars that were going into the Dollar General, at least they'd be out of the way a little bit.
Right, I mean, that's something that we talked about initially, but because of the 2020 road project going on next year and the plans for that, you know, if they built it, then we'd have to, we'd be tearing it out, and so that was just something that...
Wow.
Randy, I did have a question. If you go back to the grading graph, so with the larger retention pond there near Dayton Xenia, I feel like that might be asking for trouble. We're creating a ditch for cars to fall into.
I mean, we have those throughout the city, I mean, ponds, this is...
Yeah, but not up against a busy road like that.
Is this going to be dry or wet?
I mean, it's intended to be dry, I mean...
What's the drop off there from the road to the...
It's about, I mean, I would say it's like five, six feet. It's not, it's not a 20-foot drop or anything like that, but I mean, that's...
You flip over five or six, you're going, and you're going to, you're going to roll.
Doesn't mean I like it, just because we have it.
Yeah.
Sure.
What was the thought on having two detention ponds, just the, the grade of the...
It had to do with the grading of the size, it falls back, I mean, to get this water here, they had to have a second pond.
If I may, one of the big reasons for having that...
Come on up.
One of the big reasons for having that separate, we call it a pre-treatment area, or a forebay is another common term used, it's a way to remove pollutants from the runoff from the parking lot initially, so it's kind of a pre-treatment area, and then it would go, it would spill into the next basin and have a second area of treatment and to clean any runoff water. I mean, because we all know that any pavement creates pollutants, oils, tire rubber, blah, 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 literally trash, you know? So it gives ways to clean and trap debris or pollutants and runoff. So it's actually, it's really nice to have multiple, the more of those you have, the better, really, as far as that's concerned. So it was kind of nice that we could do it in this manner on this site.
Is there a fountain in that pond?
No, no, no.
It's a dry, it's a retention.
Pond is, pond is the incorrect term.
It's a retention, it's a retention.
Right. If it rains, if it rains, yes, a detention pond. If it rains very hard for an extended period of time, that will have a little bit of water in it, but it is designed to, to release all of its water, I believe, within 72 hours. So almost all the time, it's going to be mowable grass, nice bright green grass, that's what's going to be there. As far as a vehicle rolling over and flipping into it, that's a three-to-one slope. If that were, if that instance were to happen, it wouldn't be too difficult for a standard tow truck to winch a vehicle out of there. I don't, it's not that deep. We, this is a very common thing that we design on all sites, not just Dollar Generals.
Thank you, sir. I guess one of my additional questions for staff would be around the landscape. I know we talked about the existing tree line, discussions around adding anything.
I wouldn't have a problem with that, you know, to supplement the existing deciduous brush that's on the south side. We can look at the way, ultimately, the way the parking lot is laid out so that, you know, when headlights do come around a corner or anything like that, the evergreen trees could block that direct light. And in terms of the, the security lighting on the back, you know, we'll require full cutoff fixtures that will shine straight down. I mean, they're not going to bleed out in any direction. I mean, we'll, I mean, they're not intended to cast light a long distance away, it's just to make sure that there's lighting at that door.
Okay. Yeah, I think if it hasn't been considered already, we should look at adding some evergreen landscaping.
Yeah, certainly.
Around there.
I just, the idea, for me, the reason I didn't originally was because I don't like to take out existing mature vegetation to put in new vegetation, but I think that, and depending on what happens with this part of the property, you know, it certainly wouldn't be hard to have additional evergreen shrub, evergreen trees back here on that hill.
You think it would be difficult?
No, I said it wouldn't be difficult. We may have the room of a few feet of the, of the brush that he's talking about.
That's an interesting point, that we would have to remove some of the existing, the...
I try to avoid that, but, you know, again, like, like the gentleman said, it's, it's a decidu, it's not a year-round brush, but, you know, we try to maintain existing.
So, so could there be a one-lane exit-out only onto Longview?
I mean, I'll let the applicant speak to that. I saw an initial design with Abbott, it required some, some severe turning radiuses around the south side of the building and bringing the road close to the residential property, but I can let the applicant speak to that.
Yes, after the meeting that we had, and you spoke about that, we spent a good day or two of design work trying to come up with a solution for that. The only solution, as Randy said, snaked quite, quite a bit around the property and really had to get down in order to meet all standards, we need to get vehicles through and to have a fire truck through and to have our delivery truck through, et cetera. A standard, a standard car would be no big deal. That you can keep fairly close to the building, but unfortunately, those aren't the limitations we have to meet, those aren't the criteria we have to meet. We have to make it capable of having a larger, heavy vehicle get through there. So when we did come up with that, the only solution that we had that worked, put the driveway on the, the south side of the gentleman's property, and it was, I forget, it was four or five feet off the property lines, it was very, very close. So it would have involved removing the vegetation that was on our property to do that as well. He would have had cars going by his house all the time. It was, it's a significant addition to this that we didn't think required, that added much benefit to the property. I understand the point, it is a valid point. Unfortunately, it's just, it's not as feasible as you'd think off the top of your head. So I wish I brought the sketch along. We do have copies of it, I could, I could present that to you, but I think once you see it laid out, you wouldn't be attracted to it either. It was, it was a little goofy. It wasn't a nice formal entrance, like the 36-foot-wide multiple entrance feature that we have out in Dayton Xenia.
Well, my goal is not to have the property owner have any other issues with lights and all those things, so, you know, obviously, you know, we always want businesses to come to Beaver Creek, but at the same time, when it backs up to residential, we want to make sure our residents, you know, have some, at least a buffer that, you know, no lights in their windows and things like that, as Councilmember Vance said in Rushing, so.
And that's why we tried to keep everything tucked up top towards the other commercial things as far away as we could.
So is there anything, staff, is there any other way to improve the egress from the site, even with the widening in 2020?
You know, again, I think there'll be a left-hand turn lane there, so we're not worried about anybody incoming traffic stopping in, in the eastbound or westbound traffic coming into the site, so that's something we looked at, too. I mean, the deceleration lane on the south going eastbound, I think will be addressed with the 2020 road project.
You think it will be addressed?
I don't know if it's going to three or five lanes there. So it's three, so we, we could put a condition, or we could look at that with, work with our engineers, see if it can be incorporated, but if they were installed right now, it'd almost become that third, that lane as part of our road project, so it wouldn't be too much good in the short term, but we can talk to our engineers about that if... But we can talk to our engineers about that if they want to add that as a condition and see if that's something we can address, how long it is, you know. There's not much frontage that they have control over as you move west towards that access point. But if it is only gonna be one lane heading eastbound there, then I think that's something we could talk to our engineer about, see if, he's not here tonight, but we can see if we can get it incorporated somehow into the overall project. But there are, I mean, we, we are 100% from a planning standpoint, 100% the goal was to have access on the Longview. Anytime you get people in and out for a light, the site's kind of spread out, you know. We looked at it and thought potentially this would be a multi-tenant development where it would make absolute sense to have some multiple access points. But as was discussed, the grid topography is a little bit limiting in how the impact, more impact on the residential properties would have had if it becomes a full-access drive to Longview was something we weighed on considerably. And the 32 parking spots and the size of the store, I don't know that it really warrants two, two traffic entrances for a 9,100-square-foot building. We've got plenty of places up and down Dayton Xenia that have access. And if it were split up, you know, they'd probably have to, we had to look at cross-access easements and the like, but for 1,900 square-foot building, it's definitely something we looked at, or something I was trying to get done is to have that access along views. More Randy worked with him and dug into it, and our engineers looked at it, became quite a challenge. So the only thing I could say to answer your long-drawn-out answer here, but the one thing we'd have to work at, look at is talk to our engineering department on that right, on that westbound. Eastbound deceleration lane is really the only thing we'd have to...
You had that as a condition, then?
To work with him, see if it's possible, sure. I don't know that it's...
I'd sure like to see that. I'm afraid there are a lot of rear-end collisions, people coming over that hill and trucks and cars and...
Yeah, I think...
I know we're getting a new road in there, but the two don't...
It could be something, it's a timing issue, but I mean, it'd be something that I think Mr. Mormon could work with them up front and say, listen, if it's a cost issue, then, you know, either they pay for it or we assess the cost to do the decelerate lane on the project. Because I understand what you're saying, if we only have one lane heading east in a decelerate lane, I don't can't, I don't want to actually make it mandatory, because I don't know if it's physically possible at this point. But if we say it shall be done, if it's, if the engineer sees that there are ways to do it, then I have no problem with that whatsoever. It's getting those cars out of the, out of the eastbound traffic flow, westbound, excuse me, eastbound. So if we want a word condition like that, Steve, maybe you can come up with something, but I'd be all for it.
So when Zach asked about the pond, I wanted the... So he, he said that sometimes these dry ditches that are supposed to be for retention are kind of ugly along the roadway. Did you toy with the idea of making it a real pond? So it would be a retention? It would retain water and still serve its purpose, but it would be more aesthetically...
Yeah, it doesn't really work like that with, to get, to meet, to meet the goals of the stormwater management, to have water in it already. That's, that's an engineering kind of question. It's, there's all kinds of rules and stipulations that wouldn't allow that to be. It would have to be a separate unit, which would get rid of this altogether. One thing that can be done is, that area can be planted. You can, you can put all kinds of, there's a lot of vegetation that's native to the area that you can plant, that will thrive in the, you know, and occasionally be flooded and whatnot. There's, there's certain species that'll thrive in there. That's, that's one option. But, but no, a fountain would not be feasible.
I agree that those holes next to the roadway are kind of ugly. So I wish there was a way to...
I just think some of them are kind of dangerous, but I don't know if adding water's gonna fix that problem.
I thought it would, I thought it would make it real obvious that they don't want to drive in there.
Right.
Because if you can see the water, you know you want to stay away from it, instead of...
There will be curbing along the road widening project, I believe, which should let you know right then not to drive over there. Not only that, but our whole entryway will be curbed as well, so it'll be a defined area the whole way around.
Is this gonna be a complete street?
Yeah.
A complete street.
With sidewalk?
Yes, yes. Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions from staff or from council, excuse me?
There's gonna be an additional condition attached, right?
There's a motion, potentially two, if the motion's made.
I'm sorry.
Yep. I know we've had discussions about adding evergreens and then also a decelerate lane.
Yeah.
But we would need a conditions amendments or...
In the 13, is that already...
We have a gentleman walking to the podium here.
Good evening, council. Just if I could, as you make that condition, just make it so that it is, if it is available to put that decelerate lane, as was indicated earlier by planning, the amount of property that's controlled in that area is relatively small. So I just ask that you make it, if it's possible to put the decelerate lane in, that that be considered as part of the project, not to make it conditioned on the project. If that's simply not possible to engineer that in, I wouldn't want that to be what holds up the project. So that's, that's all I'd ask, so thank you.
That's unreasonable.
Yeah, that's reasonable, and I think Mr. McGrath alluded to that.
Yeah. Counselor, do you have a recommendation for awarding if amendment is...
Yes.
Or condition is added?
Yes.
It would read, "The applicant shall work with the city engineer and planning staff to analyze the creation and implementation of, or implementation if feasible, of an eastbound de-acceleration lane to be paid for by the applicant."
As condition 26?
That, yeah, I believe, yes, 26. That'd be 26.
What could be assessed?
Well, yeah, yeah, assessed, how it's paid for is, yeah, well, but if feasible. Because looking at the map, too, I would, Mr. Thonroe, I would, yeah, that may be, it may be, but with the project, the road, we might have some abilities to do something.
Anyone else like to make a, an additional condition? If not, I will. I was gonna do them both same time, yeah. So I would add a 27th condition to add evergreen trees in the, was that the southeast corner? Southeast corner, is that right, Randy?
Southeast corner.
Southeast corner. So, staff, you have a recommendation on how many, without looking at the site?
I mean, I'd hate to give a number. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we can, you can word it so that it says to provide adequate screening for the headlights or adequate screening for the building.
Add a men number six, that's, that's detailed landscaping plan, too. Just add that condition to it.
Amend number six?
Yes.
Shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department prior to execution of the required PUD. Agreement and release the zoning permit for the building additionally, evergreen trees. Not shall be, but, yeah, shall be included on the southeast corner.
Adequate to provide.
Adequate to provide.
Screening.
Screen.
Adequate to provide screening to the property owner to the east, to the residential property owner to the east.
All right, so we have two proposed amendments, there are a motion to add.
And I wanted to know if the one that...
Number 13, add that last sentence.
Is that, you've already got that in? I would, I would move, I would move that it be amended to include the language provided by staff.
Well, can we add that as a friendly amendment to...
Right there.
It's right there on condition number 13.
Well, but Ms. Rupton's motion, just add that to number six, right?
No, my...
No, this is number 13.
Number 13.
13 is regarding the dumpster closer date.
Three changes.
Three changes.
Three changes, yeah.
So let's clarify, we have three changes to the proposed conditions. An additional number 26, which would be about the decelerate lane. Friendly language to additional 13, or to condition 13, and additional language to condition six. We all good there? Okay.
Can you make a comment on that?
I'm sorry, public input's been closed, I apologize. Okay, can I have a motion to add the additional language? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, to add the additional languages, again, to condition number six, condition 13, and new condition number 26. All those in favor, please signal with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion does carry. So now we have, looking for a motion on the amended PUD 18-3. Is there a motion? Please.
I would...
It's, it's in your agenda.
Yep. You need to read the paragraph. Councilmember Kern?
I move for the purpose of taking administrative action. Approval of the specific site plan for Dollar General on the basis that city council will find the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials. And modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and the criteria for a specific site plan per 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are...
26.
26. I further move that this motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for answering all the questions and being available for us, to staff and the applicant. And thank you to those that made comments. Moving forward into ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs, looking at ordinance 18-27.
This is a third reading of an ordinance rezoning 4.6 acres from CPUD 96-4 to CPUD 18-4, further described as Book III, page 19, parcels 95, 97, 98, and 105 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you, this is a third reading. Any further comments from council? Councilmember Kern, I believe, was sponsored by you.
Yes. I move the approval of ordinance 18-27, PUD 18-4.
Is there a second? We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, resolution 1901.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee, the financial administrative services director, to request advanced draws upon the amounts collected by the Green County Auditor for the City of Beaver Creek 2018 real estate and personal property taxes collected during calendar year 2019.
All right, Mr. Casera.
Good evening, members of city council. This is our annual resolution that we send over to the county auditor to request advanced draws. The county auditor collects property taxes throughout the year, has already begun collecting them for last year and 19, and per the ORC, we have to send over a resolution authorizing us to get those advanced draws before he would normally distribute those. According to his instructions, he's allowed to do that in March and August. But by doing this, we start getting the money usually in February and early July and get about 60, 65% of our advanced money before those dates. So again, we use that right away for operations capital. We invest that money, and by getting those advanced draws, we probably pick up about $6,000 or $7,000 worth of interest on that money rather than getting it on the dates that are required to be distributed, so be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions from staff? I have a comment if no one else does.
I just have comments.
Go ahead.
One of the things I'd like for just the citizens to know is that we discuss these at-work sessions and go over a lot of this information. So what's on the agenda, we have already reviewed, so it's nothing new. It's a way for us to plan for the future, and that we do this at the work session, so that, that's why this is an actually easier process, and I'm sure Audit Graham will appreciate it.
Does he? You think he appreciates it?
I think he does.
Mr. Casera, I was just curious, you know, I know we do this pretty regularly. I mean, I feel like we've done this every year that I know of, if not twice a year, for the August draw as well.
Right.
Pretty common practice among other communities, do you know?
I would hope so.
Hope so?
In the past, in the past, when, also when interest rates were so low, you know, again, it was more of just getting your money on time now that the interest rates and the bank deposits are actually, you know, climbing a little bit. It does make more, you know, importance now for us to get that money early on. And again, with our cash flow, basically, we, this is our cash flow. So when we're trying to get property taxes in, it's really designed to pay for operating and capital projects along the way. So it's very timely that we get that then and get it as early as possible. But again, Star Ohio, interest rates now at 2.5, that we take that money usually and deposit it directly in there. So again, we are getting a pretty good return on this, these advanced monies.
And especially, pardon me.
Go ahead.
And especially since, obviously, we don't have earnings tax. So, you know, this is, like Mr. Casera said, our cash flow at municipalities, you know, they're, they're bringing money every single day, you know, with, you know, income tax payments, with holdings, and so on and so forth. This is almost a universal practice among school districts. Because similarly to, like, school districts, unless they have an earnings tax, you know, this is how, you know, they have two settlements twice a year if they don't have any advancement. So this is their cash flow, and also puts it back in to, you know, make some money with interest. So pretty common practice.
Yeah, I, as a council member, I was gonna say, to my knowledge, I know no jurisdiction that does not do this. Yeah, every city that, they, they get their money.
All right. Here, I thought we were just ahead of the game and, but...
We are.
All right. Any other further comments or is there a motion?
I would move to approve our resolution 1901.
Motion is second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up, we have street levy options, and Mr. Thonroe's here to speak tonight, and I'll give him the floor.
Good evening, council. Before you this evening, we've got two agenda items, if I could highlight them both while I'm here. Agenda item C and D, I'll start with C first. We have two resolutions for council's consideration to send to the county auditor to certify two different millage, the same millage amounts, but two different time periods for our existing street levy. We have talked about this in a work session. This gives council two options to consider as we move forward in our next work session before a decision needs to be made to place a resolution on the ballot to move forward to the board of elections. Similarly, in agenda D, we have options for the park levy, also with varying lengths of time, but placing different amounts on the ballot for consideration as well. As is true with the street levy, this is a requirement that before we place this on the ballot and submit it over to the board of elections, we do need to have these items certified by the county auditor. Once these are certified, that provides all the options for city council to decide which one they choose. As is indicated on the agenda, only one will be chosen from each of these. For those listening at home, or those in the audience, this just allows council to explore several different options and continue to get additional information from staff and additional dialogue and discussion with the manager and each other. Be happy to answer any questions that you have, but wanted to highlight those as a summary, and then I believe the clerk will go through and does need to read each one individually, so... If there's any questions, be happy to answer those at this time.
Open up for questions from council for staff on this. We'll open for both agenda items, C and D here, around the street and park levy. If there's no, no commentary, we will go through a little bit of a process here. Again, for those viewing at home, there's a number of resolutions that will be read, motioned on, approved or declined, or tabled, I guess. But, so just bear with us for a few minutes as we go through this little process here.
Okay.
Go ahead with 1902.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining the necessity of levying a renewal tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation for constructing, reconstructing, resurfacing, and repairing streets, roads, and bridges as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which levy shall be two mills, which is a renewal levy, to run for a continuing period of time pursuant to section 5705.19 and subsection 5705.19G. five point one nine G as amended of the Ohio Revised Code, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
So move.
Second.
Motion of second on nineteen oh two. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. If we can move forward with nineteen oh three.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining the necessity of levying a renewal tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for constructing, reconstructing, resurfacing, and repairing streets, roads, and bridges as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which levy shall be two mils, which is a renewal levy to run for the continuing period of time pursuant to section five seven zero five point one nine and subsection five zero si- five-year period. I'm sorry, I said the wrong thing.
Yeah, five.
Five-year period of time pursuant to section five seven zero five point one nine and subsection zero, uh, sorry. Five seven zero five one fi- one nine G as amended of the Ohio Revised Code, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Is there a motion on nineteen oh three?
I would move for approval of resolution nineteen oh three.
Is there a second?
Second.
And for clarity purposes, this is the five-year term.
Five-year term.
All those in favor of resolution nineteen oh three? Please aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Motion does carry. Looking at park levy options, we are now moving into resolution nineteen oh four.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council.
Only nineteen oh three on my agenda here. Renewal period runs quite a continuing period.
Question, nineteen oh three.
Well, I think what happened is they were too done, and this looks like a duplication.
Yeah, I think I might have printed the wrong one. It's supposed to be five-year. It's five-year.
Yeah, that's why.
It's a five-year period.
Five years.
It's a five-year.
If we would, if we might, I'd rather go back and actually have amendment, because five years, actually, we've got to change a few sections on here, too. Let me see here.
Mayor Stone wouldn't miss a meeting like this.
Yeah. Trying to see here where else we got.
Hope he's watching from somewhere warm in Florida.
Hmm.
So you need a motion to amend?
We need a motion to change in every spot continuing period shows for a five-year period.
I, I would make a motion that the draft resolution that was put in the agenda be amended to declare a five-year term rather than continuing in every point where it is mentioned.
Yeah, it's in the caption, it's in section one, so that's why it needs, yeah, it's gotta be added, so if we can just separate.
So I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of amending the resolution? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, now we have to re-vote on.
I would, again, request resolution, approval of resolution nineteen dash three as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second for the resolution as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counselors satisfied?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry. That's all right? Yep, I agree. Moving to nineteen oh four.
Okay. This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining the necessity of levying a renewal tax in excess of ten mil limitation for parks and recreational purposes as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which levy shall be nine-tenths mils, which is a renewal levy to run for a continuous period of time pursuant to section five seven zero five point one nine and subsection five seven zero five point one nine H as amended of the Ohio Revised Code, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
So move.
Motion in the second on nineteen oh four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Nineteen oh five, please.
This is a resolution, excuse me, by Beaver Creek City Council determining the necessity of levying a renewal tax with increase in excess of ten mil limitation for parks and recreational purposes as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which is a levy, which levy shall be one and one-tenths mils, which is a renewal of an existing levy of nine-tenths mils plus an increase of two-tenths mils to run for a continuous period of time pursuant to the section five seven zero five point one nine and subsection five seven zero five point one nine H as amended of the Ohio Revised Code, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion of second on resolution nineteen oh five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
One.
Motion carries. Nineteen oh six.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining the necessity of levying a renewal tax with increase in excess of the ten mil limitation for parks and recreational purposes as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which is a levy to be one and two-tenths mils, which is a renewal of an existing levy of nine-tenths mils plus an increase of three-tenths mils to run for a continuous period of time pursuant to the section five seven zero five point one nine and subsection five seven zero five point one nine H as amended of the Ohio Revised Code, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Okay. Is there a motion on nineteen oh six?
So move.
Is there a second? Motion of the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
This one.
Motion carries. Nineteen oh seven, please.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining the necessity of levying a renewal tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for parks and recreational purposes as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which levy shall be nine-tenths mils, which is a renewal levy to run for five years pursuant to section five seven zero five point one nine and subsection five seven zero five point one nine H as amended of the Ohio Revised Code, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve nineteen S seven.
Second.
Motion in the second on nineteen oh seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution nineteen oh eight, please.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining the necessity of levying a renewal tax with an increase in excess of ten mil limitation for parks and recreational purposes as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which levy shall be one and one-tenths mils, which is a renewal of an existing levy of nine-tenths mils plus an increase of two-tenths mils to run for five years pursuant to section five seven zero five point one nine and subsection five seven zero five point one nine H as amended of the Ohio Revised Code, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Motion for resolution nineteen oh eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor of nineteen oh eight? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, resolution nineteen oh nine.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining the necessity of levying a renewal tax with an increase in excess of the ten mil limitation for parks and recreational purposes as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which levy shall be one and two-tenths mils, which is a renewal of an existing levy of point nine mils plus an increase of three-tenths mils to run for five years pursuant to section five seven zero five point one nine and subsection five seven zero five point one nine H as amended of the Ohio Revised Code, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
So move.
Motion on nineteen oh nine, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you all for bearing with us there. Moving on to decision items, we have one. And, councilor, staff?
Did you see, gonna do it or?
Good evening, council. As is on the agenda, and as you've seen as the memo from Mayor Stone, there's a process in place by the Ohio Revised Code to create community entertainment districts within a portion of your, of your community that meets minimum requirements as outlined by the Ohio Revised Code. The, we've done this previously at the Green. When they came in, we had a solid recognize that the limited amount of liquor permits that were available for established, as dense as the Green was, that they, in order for us to do something that doesn't cost the city any money, it's just really a procedural issue to work through the state to get liquor permits, where we have to formally consider creating a community entertainment district to help facilitate some of the mixed-use development that they want to have in there, in that part of town. What we've seen now recently is with, as you know, as malls have changed their dynamics over the last couple of years, some of the renovations, we've seen the tear down of the big boxes, the additions of the, of the restaurants, some of the repurposing of the Sears Building that has been announced recently, and with still the feature of the Elder Bearman Anchor Store continually having discussions on that property. We want to do what we can in order to facilitate a more well-balanced mixed-use experience for people who visit the mall at Fairfield Commons. So as we did at the Green, we're here on the, on the request of the mayor to consider implementing a community entertainment district at the mall at Fairfield Commons. You'll see on the attached application, the area is defined as Mall of Fairfield Commons. What it does is free up a little, some, from, some D five J liquor permits to be processed through the state of Ohio, and they can file those under a community entertainment district, as you'll see on the agenda for the Venetian Nail Spa, that they're, they're applying for their new liquor permit under the community entertainment district at the, at the Green. So that's a D five under the specific category of community entertainment district for the Ohio Liquor Control Board. Procedurally, what we'll do is have to advertise the creation of this district and the following two Fridays consecutively, back-to-back, starting this Friday and the following Friday. And I believe as the mayor has outlined in his memorandum, to be, we would consider a by-res, creating this community entertainment district by resolution at the February eleventh regularly scheduled city council meeting. So this really just initiates the process. First thing is that the mayor has to present the city council and initiate the application and the creation of the district, and then we'll meet our requirements, as Steve's noted, about the advertisements in the following two Fridays, and should everything be ready to consider on the eleventh, should you guys choose to move forward with his recommendation.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you.
Any comments? Before we seek a motion? No?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for the Fairfield Commons Entertainment District. Having received and reviewed the mayor's memo recommendation, excuse me, recommending the mall at Fairfield Commons be designated as a community entertainment district, I hereby move pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, section forty-three oh one point eight oh, that the clerk of council shall cause notice to be advertised on or about January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, and January twenty-fifth consecutively, two thousand nineteen, of the filing of the application and the public's opportunity to review said application in the clerk's office, and to address city council on February eleventh, two thousand nineteen, at the regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion of the second on the entertainment district. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next agenda item is liquor permits, which we have two this evening. Chief, welcome.
Good evening, council. I do have two liquor permits. The first is a request for a new liquor permit for Venetian Nail Spa located in the Green at forty-four twenty-five Walnut Street. We received a request from Liquor Control for the request of a new D five J liquor permit. All the required records checked were conducted on this, and staff's recommendation is it moved forward without comment.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve, excuse me, a motion to accept without comment on the Venetian Nail Spa.
Motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second application request I have is for the transfer of a liquor permit from Osaka Steakhouse Inc. to Osaka Japanese Steakhouse. This is a request from Division of Liquor Control to transfer a D five I and D six liquor permit from Osaka LLC doing business as Osaka twenty-four seventy-six Commons Boulevard. The transfer would be then to Osaka Japanese Steakhouse. The required records checked were conducted on this permit, and again, staff's recommending this move forward without comment.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept without comment for Osaka Steakhouse doing business as the Osaka Japanese Steakhouse.
Is there a second? Motion of the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next up, mayor's report. He didn't send anything, but I'm assuming it's seventy-two degrees and sunny where he's at, so we'll just move on without him. Council time. Start with councilmember Kern.
Mr. Public Works again for the fantastic job they've done over the last couple of days with the big snow. They were very expeditious in moving the snow off our main arteries and then getting into the residential areas, so I wanted to congratulate them. Thought it was a good job.
Kudos.
Councilmember Little?
Just a couple of quick things. One is the Beaver Creek Rotary is having their pancake breakfast next Saturday.
Is this Saturday, isn't it?
No, it's coming up.
It's coming Saturday.
The Saturday, sorry. Next, which is the nineteenth. Thank you. Next Saturday, coming up. Nineteenth, January the nineteenth. And it is at the High School, which is a big fundraiser, not only for the Rotary, but it's also for the Beaver Creek High School Band. So if you want some good breakfast, show up, and tickets are, how many? Five dollars. Five dollars. But you can get a lot of pancakes for that, so come out and support the Rotary and the Beaver Creek High School Band. And again, I would like to say kudos to our team out there. They did a wonderful job. Lost a few mailboxes, but at the end of the day, the trucks are all still good for the next big snow event, which I hope is over.
Agreed. Councilmember Rushen?
Thank you, Mr. Upton. I'm just happy new to everyone to join the trend. Thank you to our Public Works Department for the snow removal. It keeps us safe, allows our emergency personnel to do their jobs, and encourages those to see, you know, come and visit our stores and to visit Beaver Creek. I just want to mention that I had the opportunity to attend the inaugural events for incoming administration, the governor, lieutenant governor. Just want to encourage this council, as well as anyone who's involved in professional associations or organizations, to continue to speak up about local government, the need for such, and especially the funding mechanisms that were in place, that we like to see re-implaced, but also to continue to be vocal. I have heard the new governor, as well as others, mention local government in their speeches, so I believe they recognize the need for it. But we have to do our part as well to convey that message, to continue to show how important the work that we do. So I just encourage us to continue to do that, because I think, although we may not think we make a difference, you know, if we all continue to do it, it could move, make some motion up in Columbus. And other than that, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Van?
I thought it was terrific that the Dayton Business Journal wrote about Beaver Creek. In general, they did a great, pretty good job. We had one faux pas with that, because the city manager said that we were going to have a community improvement corporation. In order to have a CIC, you must file articles of cooperation with the state of the Secretary of State. You have to outsource economic development. We have just gotten economic development in Beaver Creek, and we have Jeff as our staff person doing it. And so it was just kind of a mistake to jump to the conclusion that we would outsource it to a nonprofit that was an economic development nonprofit, or a land bank, or something like that. So for any of the public that thinks that city council has discussed this and are moving forward on it, it would be a brand-new topic. And so it was a little bit premature to assume we would be jumping to those lengths at this moment, which we may in the future, but premature at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Van. My only comments tonight, I found in my mailbox today, the Green Optimist has their Avenue of Flags coming up. So get in now, and you can be one of the members, or one of the many, that have a flag planted in front of your property at several different holidays. And I will try to go with my commitment. I know I tried last year, and I would say there's some administrative struggles to get the executed last year. My check never got there. But I will commit to purchasing a flag for city hall here to be placed out front. I hope council will join in as well, because I think it's a really cool event that, that the Optimus Club does, so. I hope council will join in as well, because I think it's a really cool event that the Optimus Club does, so...
I went with you last year on that, and I couldn't find my paper, so I need a copy of that, and...
I think it's in your mailbox.
I hope so.
Anywhere that you, or...
Are they up at the corner, or are they back down here?
They'll put it at your house, but if you want it here, they'll put it out here.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. All right.
Yep.
Okay.
So I live on a cul-de-sac off of a dead-end street, so not a whole lot of visibility. I thought it'd be nice to have one here at city hall.
Okay.
With that, that's all the commentary I have for this evening. I want to wish Vice Mayor Garcia well, as she's recuperating from childbirth. Celebrating, yes, celebrating the birth of her first child. Look forward to hearing and seeing pictures from her when she's back in action. But with that, we will close council time and go into city manager's report.
Thank you. Just as everyone mentioned, the snow event, we do have 16 trucks and 16 routes. So if anybody wondered how many trucks are out, and they were all out in full force Saturday and cleaning up on Sunday. So they had some very, very, very long days. Thank residents for their support and understanding during the snow events. As it was mentioned, that we focus on the main roads first and then the arterial roads. Main roads receive priority due to the amount of traffic increased and the course of speeds. Once the snow stops, drivers will finish the main roads and arterial roads, then begin to work into the neighborhoods. That's why neighborhoods... It does get a little frustrating, because if you have to get out, it's a little deep. But, you know, the length of the storm does matter, and Saturday it kept going and kept going and kept going. At one time, it slowed down, and trucks went into the neighborhoods briefly, and then it started coming down again, and they had to exit the neighborhoods and to get the main roads cleaned again. So we do try to get into those neighborhood streets. Plowing does not stop until all roads have been plowed, though. More on that, I just wanted to say, if you have had, you know, a damaged mailbox or a damaged yard in some way, you know, snow plows, when you got six, eight inches of snow, it's kind of hard to tell where the road begins and where the curb ends. Just contact our public service department at 427-5540, 427-5540. Just to share, it's not necessarily that the plow hits the mailbox, it's the snow that hits the mailboxes, especially as heavy as snow as we just had. That snow was heavy. And when it comes off that plow, it just, it hits anything, it knocks it over. Our guys were out today even, setting up mailboxes. Anything of yards and stuff like that, it'll be put on our priority list, and when the snow melts and things of us fixing things, we will stick to it as promised. So just be aware, but if, you know, any concerns, 427-5540 about the snow routes. I was kind of hoping on this last one that one would build a snowman. I was praying that they would be in dirt or mud, but there was an opportunity for snow. So our snowman contest is back. It's now through February 11th. So you have till February 11th, so there's plenty of snow out there, so make some snowmen. Photos will be posted on city's Facebook page, February 15th through 22nd for voting. So send those by email to parks@beavercreechohi.gov. Send the pictures to parks@beavercreechohi.gov. And lastly, city hall, or next to last, city hall will be closed on Monday, January 21st, in observance of Martin Luther King Day. And of course, as always, for non-emergencies, call the police department dispatch at 426-1225. And lastly, Laffino Plaza Palooza is coming. Say that 10 times fast, at Laffino Plaza, at the senior center. It's like an open-house kind of feel to it, Tuesday, January 29th, 6:00 to 7:30. Free to all ages, are welcome. There's light refreshments, activity stations, and tours throughout the facility, Laffino Plaza and the senior center. And even Beaver Creek Community Theater will also be open. So the whole building's kind of an open tour, and they'll have different activity stations that keep kids busy. And I think they have like a map, and get stickers as they go throughout the building and things as such. So it's a good space, and like I said, there'll be activities to keep the little ones occupied. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. At this time, we'd like to invite anyone from the public to come up and give us some feedback on any particular subject or item. Comments, we ask, to be limited to three minutes. But if you have two other folks in the audience tonight that would donate their three minutes, you can speak for up to nine. Just need to come forward with your name and address, and we'd love to hear from you. Anybody here tonight like to address council? We have several smiling faces. Someone at least come up and say Happy New Year to us. I mean, anything. One Happy New Year, thank you. All right, with that, we will close the citizen comments section of the meeting. And as you heard earlier on tonight, we did add an executive session, so we'll look for a motion for the executive session.
I got to read this.
There's some language along with it.
Thank you, Mr. Upton. I move to enter an executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of conference of city attorney concerning disputes involving the city that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a roll call, please?
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Just as a reminder, this will effectively end the televised portion of the meeting. There will be no decision or action items coming out of the executive session. So while you are welcome to stick around, the only thing we're going to do when we get back is adjourn the meeting. With that, we're going to ask the council to adjourn to the back room. Thank you.